Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the Vator City Council, I welcome all in attendance at this regularly scheduled city council meeting, which we will officially call to order at 6:00 PM on this June 8th, 2017. We'll officially begin with our roll call. We'll invite our city clerk to engage in his voice.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
Present.
Jason Daly?
Here.
Joe Scheid?
Present.
Mike Parsons?
He's called and indicated he's available on the cell phone.
Yes. So do you want me to do that?
Well, after the vote.
Okay. Leona Sanderson-Hunter?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Also present. At this point, I think that prior to the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Parsons is awaiting our call to him.
Sorry, I'll just remember anything.
Okay. And so I think that it would be appropriate to engage in that with a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Parsons' calling into the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Flin? Mr. Scheid? Has submitted a motion to approve a teleconference call of Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. That motion is carried. So why don't we go ahead?
Who made the motion?
Mr. Scheid.
Thank you.
I need one of the phones over here so I can hear.
Oh, yeah. Andy was saying he's having a hard time hearing Joe.
Oh, really?
You mean Mike?
That'd be Mike if you could.
I can scoot it over.
I thought you could get way closer.
Hi, Mike. This is Jill. We're in the council meeting and we're just approved having you by teleconference. So I'm moving the phone right now. Trying to make it closer so Andy can hear you better.
Yes.
That's what I think about as far as it's going to reach.
Please.
Right now, but my flip's.
Hello, Andy, can you hear me?
Can you hear him?
I can hear him now a little bit.
Says he can hear you now a little bit.
Perfect.
Alrighty. Well, we are ready now with an appropriate quorum to proceed with our pledge of allegiance. So I'll invite all the grounds. Mr. Welton, you move please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a clarity and justice for all.
Thank you. Bless our country.
Got the three items on the mayor's report. I'd like to invite all present, and council members included, for so inclined, to attend our second big community meeting, which is scheduled for Saturday, June 10th, at 10:00 AM, at the Fellowship Hall of the Assembly of God Church in Vator. So an invitation is officially extended to all present and others. Invite other members, friends, and associates of the city. I would like to report that the Castle Rock School District pre-kindergarten meeting occurred on June 6th as planned and scheduled. Some efforts were made to encourage preschool children from three to six years of age to be in attendance. And I understand that we had seven different families and up to 10 kids in attendance, approximately. And so I was there at the outset and it was a most impressive event. And I think the individuals from Castle Rock School District were gratified and impressed with the turnout. And we anticipate that there'll be more kids at the next.
I think they should have publicized it more. Period. Because I'm all for it. I want to see it go.
Yeah. Well, actually it was. There was a concerted effort on part of the individuals in the community to contact families with children. It wasn't a blanket event, but the general takeaway, Mr. Welton, was when the buildings are built, it'll be much easier to market. But we did discover that there was a fee associated with for each child who's in attendance. And I don't know that that point was well articulated at the outset of that. It was $150 a year, which turns out to be $22 a month, approximately. But there might be some wiggle room for financially disadvantaged families if they have children in that category. Nonetheless, that's what we have and we're off and running. So the last talking point I had was that we're still moving ahead with the Fourth of July event. Reggie Smith is doing what Reggie does and that's preparing well for it. The city is working closely with him. And you'll notice a sign that's up on the school fence, a marketing.
I started advertising last night on my building. Victor Dart, it says, big flag, and then it says Fourth of July.
Right. Okay. That's good. And signs are being distributed. I know we have one at the community center and other locations. So we're anticipating a very positive event. We have a comment from the public. Do you care to counsel? Do we have an individual who'd like to speak?
Sure.
I was just curious when the animals will leave because, you know, they end up being left.
Yeah, good point. We've been watching. I was told by the superintendent they'd be gone on the 31st of May. And that is a concern for us. Because what we don't want is to take our blankets and discover some landmines, as they say. But I know at least one member of the council has noted that. So maybe we should take note and contact the superintendent to follow up on that.
Yeah, there's a lot of groundwork that needs to be done before.
It's fertile ground.
Yeah. It's green grass.
Alright. So with that, that concludes the mayor's report. And the council. Now, have any reports that you'd like to bring to the public's attention?
I'd like to point out that I've been kind of driving around the streets and I'm very impressed there's a lot of yards that are looking really nice. Flowers, grass is all cut, engine is done. There's a lot of yards. They're doing a great job of their spring cleanup.
Thank you for noting that. And I was actually in your yard the other day and I don't know about finer yard in the city of Vator. Looks like a state park. So you're leading by example there. I thank you for that. Alright, absent any other.
I would.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Parsons.
I would like to bring up that maybe we add to the next agenda about changing the time of the city council meeting to, say, nine or 10 o'clock in the morning on a Thursday for multiple reasons, but some of the main ones is that city staff would be able to work it into their workday. If we have to talk with anybody else, like tonight, Jackson Civil Engineering is supposed to be speaking, that would be much easier for all of them to come during the day instead of after hours. So I'd like to just throw it out there, go for 9:00 AM or 10:00 AM, whatever everybody speaks about.
Okay.
Change it.
Okay. Well, duly noted. We could certainly put it on our next meeting's agenda. That topic had been discussed, I know, previously. Mr. Parsons is proposing that the council consider moving the time of our city council meetings from evening, hour two, maybe a Thursday morning, to accommodate individuals such as Mr. Jackson who take time off work and other similar situations. And it would accommodate the city employee who, on occasion, might have need to have some time off on Thursday evening too. That is a topic that we could certainly put on the agenda if a council member wants that. So duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, then let's proceed with our agenda approval for tonight's meeting.
I made a motion that we approved the city council meeting agenda for 6/08/2017.
Okay. Mr. Daly submitted a motion to approve the council meeting agenda as it's currently written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Welton. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. That motion is carried. Now the minutes approval for our last city council meeting.
I'm having the motion we approved the city council meeting on 5/25/2017.
Okay. Mr. Welton has submitted a motion to approve the minutes of our city council meeting of May 25th, 2017. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daly. All in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Voucher approvals. Oh, note, we added a change in direction on the pink slip. Mike, I don't think that you can see it, but I don't know if you have a copy of your agenda in front of you. I'm showing it to you. So we will proceed.
I do have a copy of the agenda in front of me.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the first half of June 2017 at the amount of $43,483.32.
Okay. Mr. Daly submitted a motion to approve the expenditures as noted. Mr. Parsons, did you hear the amount?
Yeah, $43,000.
Yeah. Okay, approximately.
Yeah, $3,000 less than the first one.
Yeah. Okay, we're good. Alright, then do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Leona. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Alright, we're now ready for our special reports. We just scheduled Lewis County Sheriff's Report. This is the second council meeting in a row where they've not been in attendance. Are you aware of the reason why?
No, I didn't hear anything from them.
We'll follow up and determine why that is. So absent the report, let's proceed with. Yes, Mr. Parsons?
Since we're talking about the sheriff's department, while you're following up on why are they not there, could you probably ask them to maybe get a little bit more aggressive instead of just doing the, hey, I've heard a lot of people complain about them just coming to do their paperwork. And I think that they do a wonderful job, but I think that they could get a little bit more proactive on speeding stop signs, so on and so forth.
Duly noted. Okay.
You're.
Yeah, we'll pass that along to them. Okay. So let's proceed now with the second special report, which will be provided by Mr. Devon Jackson, Jackson Civil Engineering.
Hello, I'm Devon with Jackson Civil Engineering. I'm the cities engineer for the A Street Improvement Project, which has been funded by the TIB Transportation Improvement Board. Fully, actually. You guys don't have a match on this particular project, so this is all coming out of funds that aren't coming directly out of your pockets. I mean, it's one way or the other, you pay for it. So Jill and I were at a class earlier this week and part of, one of the things they talked about was the concept of complete streets. And I kind of, I was racking my brain how to encompass that credo or that new design standard and how it was reflected in this project. And one thing that it reminded me of when they were up talking is I have, and you probably all know people that you can relate to that are similar, but I have an uncle. And my uncle had bought five acres of beautiful property, built a big house, you know, meticulously landscaped, you know, every square inch of the thing. So, you know, a few years later, he was talking to me and I had found out that he was selling the property. And I said, "Well, God, why are you selling this property as a dream house?" He said, "Well, it's too much for me to maintain." And similarly, I have a friend that she went to, went to college, got out of college, and the first thing she did to reward herself was she bought a, bought a house, or not a house, a car. And, you know, bought a real nice car. Couple of years later, I was talking to her and she said to me, "Well, I got rid of the car." I said, "Oh, God, why'd you get rid of the car?" "Well, it was too much for me to pay. I couldn't afford the payments." So similarly, that's kind of the idea behind complete streets. You know, they're, during the big expansion on infrastructure, we built quite large, originally, you know, a lot of design standards came from the State Highway Department. The highway department, as you know, is in the business of building freeways and highways, not city streets, local access, residential. So that standard was typically similar to this. And for a lot of small cities, this is the typical user group for that, that amount of width in asphalt. So complete streets, you know, a lot of people associate it with just bicycles and trying to bring in pedestrians. And that's not necessarily the case. What complete streets overall is trying to achieve is the most efficient design for all users. And a lot of times, that means, hey, if you don't have bicycles, you don't put in a bike lane. Or if you don't have pedestrians, you don't put in sidewalks. And in this case, you know, if you have, you don't need four lanes of traffic, you don't put in four lanes to maintain and pay for. So this is kind of an example of what we're trying to go from this to something more like this, where, you know, you have a reasonable cross section, you're accommodating users with sidewalks, nice wide sidewalks. You know, you might mix up your parking so that way you're not providing too much parking space, but, you know, not too little. Just kind of a general look at, hey, what can we afford? And, you know, how can we take that and basically improve and address all users' concerns to the best of our ability? So this was what was put in for the grant application. And this was basically a result of having a conversation with the TIB. And we said, "Hey, you know, we'd like to figure out a way to bring some money to Vator." They had applied several years in a row and we're not funded. And one of the things they said was, "Well, our money doesn't go very far in Vator. You know, our money has to go statewide. So we work with all cities, all counties, in the state of Washington. And, you know, when we can pave or chip seal, you know, a couple of miles of streets in most other cities, when we come to Vator, you know, A Street being an example, it's a very wide street, so the money doesn't go as far. So, you know, proportionally, they prefer to go, you know, it's hard for them to justify paving a street that doesn't have necessarily a user group." So in this instance, you know, you can see we are narrowing the cross section, changing the parking a little bit, or was the proposal. Once you cross Sixth Street, here's the, here's the church. They were going to put in parking or pave the parking for the new park, the working park that was put in. And this is kind of a representative cross section for this section of street between Seventh and Sixth. And they agreed to also pave this completely with no change to the cross section between Sixth and Fifth. So that's kind of the original scope of the project. Okay, it's just, you know, so I'm not sure how publicized this, if everybody's aware, but. Kind of moving forward, this is showing you a rough, you know, this is just Google view so it shows you what, you know, it looks like there. When it was originally scoped with the TIB, it looked like this street was relatively centered up. You know, you go from a real wide street to a more narrow street, which was a little deceiving. In actuality, when we did the survey and created an aerial, the red line represents the actual center line of the street, the physical center line. So if you were to basically find the midpoint of what's out there, that's this red line. Yellow is, in this case, the center line of this section of street, but it follows through and this is where this road should be lining up. So basically, it's set off to the, to the west. This kind of shows how this proposal would line up if they, if, you know, that scope was to be followed through with. There's, as you can see, the two center lines, there's quite the gap. So one thing we're here to kind of talk about and we want to try to get public input is what, you know, some ideas that we could try to change the scope a little bit to better accommodate, you know, the community. And, you know, at the same time, give the TIB what they're looking for with their money, and that's to put, you know, people on a road diet so they can spread, you know, so they can fund people more often in the future. So going forward, one thing that, you know, I know was kind of scary, especially when you look at the, you look at that picture and you're looking at proportions, you're thinking, "Oh, my God, it's just, you know, a terrible reduction." So if we were to carry the edge of parking, this line, this line, so that's typically your travel lanes, not necessarily the full width of the road, but, you know, what your vehicles will be traveling in. So just zooming into this picture and taking this portion and moving it over there, you'll see that those lines line up pretty much exactly with, you know, the whole roadway width you're already utilizing. So this road, the reduction is still wider than this because you obviously, you have eight-foot park in on either side, which doesn't necessarily, you know, see full-time use. But, you know, at a minimum, it does also correlate to what your typical streets throughout the city look like. So one proposal we had to try to accommodate that shift was to basically utilize the same type of parking that the city's already seen on this west-east side. And unfortunately, that would remove the parking on this side. So what it does is it takes that same width of asphalt and basically shifts the lanes over. So you're still giving the TIB the reduction they're looking for, and you're actually getting probably about the same amount of parking because your diagonal takes up less space on one side than in parallel. So you accommodate more cars in a given space. But because it shifts those lanes over, you also line up better on the other end. One concern was, well, if we get rid of the parallel parking on this side, you know, there's no, no way to access the church. So we thought we'd try to get the TIB, talk to the TIB and see if they'd approve kind of widening.
That's because of post office.
Or post offices, sorry. The, that was quite the reaction. Anyway, we tried to get four, four parking spots for the, for the post office and then obviously this would be, their little entrance would be carried out and this would be a driveway drop. So what that would look like on the other side of the street is, this is kind of what it does to those center lines. As you can see, it brings it closer and this is about the exact same offset that you guys currently have. It's within design tolerances, so there's no issue there.
So there's no parking on the west side of the street?
Under this proposal, aside from here.
Like where that red car is, that's all gone?
Yeah, that would be gone and that would be, you know, grass or maybe some sort of landscaping that we work with to put in, you know. One thought was, they mentioned during your Fourth of July, there's booths that set up. You know, that might make kind of a nice area for a booth to set up and, or booths to set up to, for little vendors and community events. As is currently proposed, there is parking on both sides. So that would be kind of the change with this particular proposal. Another option is you could do some sort of chicane, which would, you know, realign this section of street to bring it down and line up with that. There are some complications there. You know, this is city right-of-way currently, but, you know, as you know, the church is utilizing it for parking. And it would take away a portion of that route traffic. So, you know, there could be a look at maybe switching that to a couple of spaces of parallel parking. And keeping in mind what this doesn't show since it's existing is that there is going to be additional parking over here too, to accommodate the park. But those are kind of the two options being explored. So we thought we'd just kind of present it and open it up to a little bit of discussion and see what people fall on.
One immediate question, there is currently parking on the north side by the pavilion.
Yeah, right there.
The other side.
It'd be the other side.
Okay.
That's customarily where residents park to access the pavilion.
We're not, so this, where you're seeing it tie in is pretty much where it would tie into the chicane. As for the, as for the current project or really any alternate, the TIB isn't proposing to do anything to this cross section. So all they're saying is that we'll come in as part of this project and we'll overlay it to give you a revitalized road. There's no actual change to your width or whatever. This was just a possible proposal to figure out a way to make this, this portion, which is part of the grant stipulation work.
So just to clarify, it's not shown on the picture, but the pavilion being up here, because here's the jail and here's the pavilion and we have parking right here. So that would just stay the same? That wouldn't be paved or anything? It would just, but we could still use that for the same parking?
Correct. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And they, like it says, originally, you know, they proposed this chicane isn't, isn't part of the existing proposal. As it stands, they're saying, "We'll just come through here and pave, repave your road because it's obviously in need of paving."
The east side of that road, not north of Sixth.
Excuse me. Well, no, this is an open conversation. I'm sorry. I don't want to over-regulate.
Is this open or do I need to raise my hand?
It's open.
He's in charge.
When you go north of Sixth Street and west of the church, alright, that section of the road on the east side of the road, you pave that as you have it proposed, right there.
This right here?
That's the west side.
Yeah, is that what you're talking, oh, so you're talking about this here?
Right there, that dirt section?
Yeah, that's not proposed into the grant.
I understand that. But if you set that, that road as a cross section like you are from Sixth to Seventh Street, then that section of dirt right now would then be a lake.
Well, part of this is going to be accommodating drainage, so there will be grading that goes into it and extra catch base and.
And that curved section right there?
Well, this curved section is.
No, no, not in the road, in the dirt section.
This right here?
The curved wall, all, right there, that curved wall, that's on city property. That wall, the church has planned to take that out.
Oh, they're planning to take it out?
Yeah. That's what the pastor told us when we were there. Maybe you missed it.
Yeah, no, he had mentioned that they were interested in paving it potentially, but.
Well, it depends how the cross section works out, what the church is going to do in that section.
Yeah.
Would you do the picture of the front of the post office again? And so there would be a driveway for the postal thing to go down through there?
Yes.
Was that showing a sidewalk?
Yeah, this would be a representation of your new, your new sidewalk. It comes to a tie-in to this existing. We basically striped that. You know, one concept is, as people, I know it's a common deal here to do kind of a U-turn. You could look at even reversing some of this, this striping, you know, part of, one of the ideas is to kind of help with visibility, they do back end diagonal parking. So, you know, somebody could come in here theoretically and kind of swing around and then back in and jump out.
They're not there that long.
Yeah, you probably work out better in the other direction.
Yeah. Drive up one hill.
Well, Devon, I have to admit that as we walk through and this is, continues to be different. And I do think that there is some public concern about, at least what I'm seeing here. Have the maintenance, where the red car is at?
Yep.
You say it would be landscaped, grass.
Yeah.
And so that old sidewalk would be out.
Yep.
And so the property owners, in essence, would then maintain?
No, good. So you still have, you're not giving up right-of-way. So because you guys have a wide right-of-way section, that's technically city property, even though you reduced the road. So we're not looking to get, you know, now you're getting into property rights and technically you guys still have. So we're not looking to get, you know, now you're getting into property rights and technically you guys still have, uh, you, you own to the very front of these buildings. But the way they were built, there was no setbacks, so.
So there's more maintenance required of our city employee.
Unless you wanted to gravel it of some sort, I mean, that's kind of the discussion, the, you know, city input. At this point, I haven't looked at, and these are all landscaping, you know, this has just been kind of how do we accommodate the reduction the T I B requires and at the same time, kind of get what the community wants out of it.
I know we've gotten feedback, I know Mr. Wilson expressed concern about the shrinkage of that because we've enjoyed the plaza-like feel of that wide street. How much would it cost if we wanted to go ahead and pave all of it?
I don't think the T I B would want to increase the size of the road.
They'd pull their money out.
Yeah. So what would be the barrier between the city property and, like, say where that red car is? What would be between the sidewalk and say where city property ends, in the grass?
Well, and that's open up for discussion. So that, this isn't like, hey, we make all the final decisions. It's just, I don't want to spend a bunch of the city's money engineering something that we're then going to change. So I'd like, if we could get, you know, the goal here was to get kind of the general, yeah, we think this align would work for us. And then, uh, you know, we've met in my contract, there's a couple other meetings, and there'll be further opportunities to kind of take a look at, you know, do we want to put grass there? Would we like to put trees? Would we like to put, you know, park dust or gravel?
That proposal, how wide is that road going to be when you're done?
This here? So all in all, you're looking at about thirty-six feet.
So roughly three lanes and no cars apart there?
Yeah.
So that would still give the city a plaza, a quasi-like plaza effect with thirty-seven feet.
Yeah, I mean, that's still most county road cross-sections are, I mean, you know, that's still a very big cross-section by general. And that's why, you know, they're, they're pretty much saying, hey, this is where they're digging their heels in, is, you know, we'll, we'll help you fund, we'll fund it, but, you know, what we want is a reduction.
But, so theoretically, the city would still own that dirt if the city wanted to put a kiosk or something on that dirt?
Yeah. You could put a kiosk, or, you know, one thing that, you know, was kind of thrown around is the potential to, if a developer came in, they wanted to build a couple of storefronts. Well, the city could sell that property and then utilize that fund in for, you know, parks or whatever.
And that's interesting.
And I'm not a budget guru, so that's where I kind of start to.
As far as the separation, it'd be no different than when you drive out our streets. The city has a right-of-way in the streets, and it goes on a private property, you know, they have some online. And it's just there, you know? They have a state which marks the city right-of-way and not allowed to take from that state over to my property. And you either take care of it or you don't. And the city pretty much mows there, what's there. So it's not a big, that part isn't a big deal. I understand that having a wide plaza effect of thirty-seven feet would still be quite an area.
Yeah, each lane is about, you know, ten foot wide in width, and then, you know, with that diagonal parking, you're looking around, you know, eighteen, nineteen feet somewhere there. Maybe sixteen, it just depends on the angles obviously changing. So we kind of look at those and see what would be, you know, the skew, the better skew in the narrow where you can get it. And also, it's nice for people backing out because they can seat down.
If it's thirty-five feet, between thirty-five and forty feet, that's still a nice plaza.
Absolutely.
Now, we also talked about lighting. Um, where would, is the lighting going to be?
So the lane's going to be on both sides, and that's kind of another, you know, like, we can't, I can't get my electrical consultant going until we kind of figure out where this sidewalk will be. But here, you know, the only impact to this sidewalk is probably a proposed curb and gutter to help try to convey the water the best we can. And then the panels that have these existing, uh, existing lights in them would be removed and new ones would be put up. So we have an improved, uh, probably, I would imagine they'll be taller, and then an LED lighting system. So the light will be more directed, uh, they'll do a photometric analysis to make sure you've got even coverage. And also, LED is cheaper than what you have currently, so it saves the city money with their lighting.
Could it be Victorian style?
Yeah, the only limit to lighting is it's considered landscaping, which only five percent of the budget, you know, because T I B is obviously in the business of repairing roads, so they limit landscaping costs to five percent. So they'll pay all day long for Cobra heads, you know, your standard roadway lighting. Anything above and beyond that cost, so basically the price difference between whatever light the city chooses and the Cobra head, that's considered part of that five percent. So it's something we'd have to look at and kind of do a cost analysis. But yeah, the idea would be, you know, something taller and all, probably talking, I would imagine.
Excuse me, so the, uh, it's hard for me to see this, but, uh, the, the one side that we're going to have an extra amount of dirt, uh, can, can any of the grants be used to put in like an extra, extra-large sidewalk or planters or anything like that? Or is that that five percent that you were just talking about?
The planters would fall under the five percent. Uh, sidewalks, we could look at, but it's already going to be wider than, so what you have here is like varies from three and a half to four feet or so. This would be five plus half a foot on the curb, so, you know, you're getting a little wider.
Some new ornamental trees if we so desired?
Kind of just depends on, you know, we'd have to check and see where the piggyback goes. You know, but then again, if you guys wanted to jump on and fund the additional difference, you know, and additional landscaping, that's entirely possible too.
Put in some curved, flatter boxes in there? Put in some curved, flatter boxes in there?
Well, is this, is this firm yet or not?
We're just talking about it.
What part of it is, are you asking, if you're, if you're asking about the roadway reduction, which I'm assuming you are, that part's firm?
Do I still like my eighty-foot street? And I like my ten-foot down the middle with my lights and flowers.
How deep are those parking, um?
These here?
Angles?
The angles, I believe just the representative, the representation was, I want to say thirty degrees off.
No, no, I meant are they eight feet deep or are they ten feet deep?
Oh, no, no, these, these are going to be about sixteen-foot depth.
Okay.
Sixteen to eighteen.
Yeah, so, uh, he has a standard truck that's twenty feet long, so he's going to stick out a little bit.
Well, I've got to keep in mind it's skewed though, so when I say sixteen feet, it's from, if you measure perpendicular between here and here, that's, that's the sixteen to eighteen feet. So if he, unless he's parking, you know, taking up two spots into the angle, that, that's kind of why they, they figure that angle changes the depth because there's kind of a standard vehicle size they look at, and as you angle it, obviously, you can go narrower to the curb.
Well, I don't want to belabor this point, but the parking by the pavilion, is there not some way that we could throw a little asphalt there? Because it's, it's just gravel and it's rather unsightly.
Uh, so, I don't, basically, I mean, I'm happy to kind of ask, but the reality is, is they consider, they don't typically pave fast curve returns or parking because they're there for your streets. And, you know, like I said, I thought it was kind of, I think, to be honest with you, if we go back to, let's see, this right here, you know, that's kind of atypical for the T I B. So I think that was kind of, they say, hey, we're recognizing that we're, you know, taking some space here, so we accommodate, you know, maybe parking there. And this is, this is working park area, your pavilion that you're talking about would be right here.
Could you shift to that, that here?
Could you shift the parking section just down, further down the street? I mean, that wouldn't make any difference in how much they're spending.
Uh, your sidewalk connection is.
Oh, that's true.
That, that says eight foot for parking.
It's a straight path.
This is for the original parallel parking.
Oh, I see.
So this cross-section, so this is kind of the current proposal. So, you know, what we're talking about here is to get some ideas to come back to T I B because obviously this, this won't work, so that kind of gives us a chance to say, hey, you know, could we switch it to, you know, the other options we've discussed? Which would be, you know, this or that chicane if we wanted to keep that parallel parking cross-section.
I don't know, I think the chicane's kind of goofy.
That's the, that's the.
It's their little, like, that's the little.
That guy right there.
Yeah. Because chicane's going on.
Some chicanery.
Well, then plus that would really impact the church and all of their, and they use all of their parking right there up every Sunday. So that would, wouldn't want to mess up with their overall.
Well, that makes it too much, uh, problem for me to plow during the winter.
What's that?
Now, you can only plow in straight lines, can't you?
We're not plowing.
Well, there's another, you'll have to plow less with the road.
I want a straight thing down there to plow.
This will be straight and there'll be less for you to plow, so come winter, you can thank me.
So what you're looking for is direction, as far as what council kind of want?
Yeah, it seems like the feedback is kind of this, this direction. And, I mean, so yeah, I just want to see what alternatives you guys develop. And it sounds like this one. So what we'll do now is I'll go talk to T I B, say, hey, you know, here's our reasoning why this can't, can't work. Uh, you know, this seems like a decent compromise. This kind of keeps the, the full width there, and we still narrow down. And at the same time, we'll help line up the intersections. Then I can at least kind of get movement up forward with that. And during our first review, we can maybe take a look at, you know, what are some ideas for landscaping or?
Would it make sense to move where that, where, where the sidewalk juts out there on the west side in front, yeah? To move it a little further north, to kind of like, right about there?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's open for debate. The problem is, the farther we go there, the less reduction they're getting, so I was trying to kind of keep it. They threw, they're, when I kind of did a precursor discussion with them, they said, yeah, you know, we might consider like four parking spots. So if you'll notice, I have one, two, three, four. But the other thing here too is, as these people are backing out, this kind of gives a little, you know, if there's some, something coming in or going out here, this kind of gives a little separation, was another thought. If, you know, because the other options we could try, you know, I can see what our setback is, and, you know, move it a little bit that way if we're afraid that that would cost a funny, funny movement.
Do you know how many total parking spaces there will be at the end of the day?
Uh, not, so this side, I imagine whatever you kind of have out there is going to, it wouldn't change. So if we'd add, you know, these four over here, is the only real difference. If, with this particular, I haven't, I didn't go down the line and, you know.
Well, one of these, one of these cases is going to be a high-rise or something right there where that red car is, so we need to have parking.
Unless you're Portland, which you guys, you know, don't want to go parking. I'm on record, I know.
So I just want to make sure I understand, we have to, we don't have an option, we have to narrow?
Well, you have the option to give him the money back, but I wouldn't recommend it.
To keep the grant money, we have, we can't go in, because I think Andy's idea of having the street wider and a barrier down the center with lights and trees and, I think that would be really nice looking, but we don't have that option.
Yeah, no, when Joe and I, Joe and I, and like, there was another person there that had with the T I B, he proposed that. And they didn't want to go with it because it's more maintenance costs, you know, so.
Okay, I know we have limited time constraint for this evening's meeting, but, um, so the council, any other last thoughts?
Yeah, I, I'm not for the chicane, and I like that whole, even if we gotta, you know, cut over just a little bit, I think most of us are pretty much used to be small roads not winding up well correctly.
Well, yeah, exactly, this would give you basically what you already have out there. I mean, obviously, they would be much improved, but as far as the offset goes, it's going to, it'd be like driving today.
Right, right.
To me, it's too many zigzags.
Yeah, well, so the proposal is to get rid of the zigzag, so it's all going to be one straight shot, so you'll ignore. If you take away this, because this is actually how long roads pretty much line up now, as we showed with that yellow and the red line. So it's, you're going to be driving straight through it.
What are you going to do about the, the main city storm drains?
Well, the goal here would be to increase your crown to one side or the other, or, you know, we'll have to look at what the grading will work, or what grading will work. But we'd like to get the water from the edges first, and then if we can push them down, there is money in here for a couple of catch basins. So one nice thing about reducing impervious surface is you get less runoff. So, you know, you're, just by doing this, apparently, you're reducing the amount of stormwater that's going to be in the area. But then on top of that, there is money in the budget to hopefully put in a couple of catch basins and try to, try to tie into this ditch line, at least down in this area.
Because those, those storm drains are the main, main storm drain all the way up to the school street, D Street.
Yeah.
All the way to the Uleka.
Yeah, so actually, this will improve, you know, down, downstream, I'm sure, you know, Jason's interested in this, but it would reduce what's going down the ditch lines to, uh, your downstream properties.
In this proposal, are there any of the pedestrian bulb, bulb-outs that were in the proposal?
This, I'd imagine, would probably take, get rid of the bulb-outs just because of the way you, since there's no parking here, there's no, no bulb-out.
No reason for them to cross right there.
Exactly. You know, there might, we could probably consider still throwing them in over here. I know, you know, this, it would probably make sense to try to keep, um, but that'd be a heck of a bulb-out.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it out there, so it's not something to be seen, you know, like right now, it's way in.
When this project proceeds, if you go with a straight line like that, the section there in the church property?
This here?
That, the dirt? I know you're going to change grades and work on drainage. Can that be paved if the church is willing to pay for that portion of that pavement?
Yeah, and I met, I went with the mayor, we went to talk to.
Tracy?
Tracy, yeah, thank you. Um, and yeah, if they were willing to pay for that, we could probably jump on it and try to give them economies of scale. And, you know, the goal here would be, obviously, this is going to be coming up because we're not, you know, we're not going to cut it all out and we're going to pay on top of it there. So if there's a way to kind of increase that ditch line in that area so that water at least stays in there and then transfers, or traverses down to the existing ditch line, which is, you know, somewhere up there, that'd be the goal. Uh, the hard part here is it's a very flat area and, you know, there's not a lot of money in the budget. Yeah, for drainage.
But that's where catch basins would be.
Yeah, we try, we try to design a catch base, at least we can catch this, the water coming down through here. And then, you know, as I said, reducing this would kind of reduce without water coming down this way, so.
May I ask, what is the projected time for all of this to happen?
Well, if we get consensus, consensus and move forward, the goal is to be constructed next summer. So we'll go out to advertisement in March.
So sometime in the summer then?
Yeah. Basically, when weather allows, if we have another weather, winter or summer like this one, then it'll be August.
All right, thank you for your input and for the public's input.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. With that, let's now officiously proceed with our agenda. A public comment would be next.
No.
Okay, we have Cindy Radcliffe, you're first.
Cindy Radcliffe, ten twenty-seventh street. We all know that in order for a city to grow and thrive, we have to bring in new people and we have to bring in new businesses. And toward that end, you know, we have had people that have come into the city, but then we seem to lose other people that move out. And our population seems to have been pretty stable or the same for the last ten, fifteen years. Unfortunately, we've also lost a lot of people that have wanted to come into the city and have been either frustrated or, in their words, misled, and so they have decided not to move here. At the last council meeting, we had a nice lady that was sitting in the audience that had put an offer on this property on Ninth Street, I think it's Ninth, Ninth Street, it's across from the old Watchmaker's house. And she was excited to move into the city, she had her contractor out here, she was looking at the property. And then because of a couple of negative interactions with, um, people here, she was frustrated. And she came to the city council meeting to see how the city council interacts with people here. And of course, that happened to be the night that you guys decided to raise the building permit sixty-five percent. So when you guys took your break, we walked outside and she said, why should I build here? Why should I come to this city if, number one, I'm going to be treated, in her words, demeaning and insulted? And second, that you're going to raise the, um, building permits? And second, that you're going to raise the building permits that much higher? And, you know, Judy and I talked to her, we tried to explain all the nice things that are going on, the, the activities that are coming up. And she didn't know any of that because her only interactions with the city had been with the city website and then talking to people here. So two days later, she canceled her sale and said, no, I'm done. She only had negative interactions in order to make her decision. And that's a shame because she's a well-educated professional, works in Chehalis, was excited to move here, and that's a loss for the city. And I can give you five instances in the last 15 months of people that I've talked to directly that have lost sales because of negative interactions in the city. And I'm asking the city council to work with the mayor to make sure that these negative interactions stop happening. And if you can't make that behavioral change, then go further and, and make further changes and eliminate the cause of those interactions. We all know what we're talking about, this is a small town, you can't flush twice without people knowing about it. We all know about the negative interactions that are happening. And honestly, they have to stop because all five of these instances were people that were hardworking people, taxpayers, wanting to build houses, wanted to bring in a business. One was a bakery. Anybody have an objection to a bakery? I mean, I know I need to lose a few pounds, but I could have used a bakery. You know, and they wanted to buy a commercial property on A Street. And that man, after a couple times, just walked away and said, no, I'm, I'm done. So that type of information has to stop.
Very good. Thank you for that. Duly noted. I'm tempted to respond to that in public forum. I wish that we could also talk to the dozen or more families that have moved in who've shared with me how grateful they are for the low permit fees, which are less than most communities, but I won't officially add that.
Did any of them build, are any of them building anything?
One's building right now over by the Parsons property. But we were operating under a building moratorium for a goodly number of years. And we're past that now. So, and I wish that individual had actually talked to the mayor because I, actually, the information I got clearly reflected some grievously erroneous misinformation that they had. So who knows what might have happened if she had an opportunity to talk to, if people really knew what they were saying. So that's my feedback on that situation.
Well, I've lost two sales in the last five months on my property up there because I opened my mouth and told them about the building artist and all of it. And they freaked out right there and said, no, thank you, we aren't going to come in the city of Vader.
Every city has that. You can do a comparative analysis, which of course is not necessarily the wisest thing to do, but you try to build a home and expect not to have permits, but that's not based in any form of reality. So, but this is, here again, like I say, for the mayor to pipe into a public comment is just inviting this sort of exchange and it's unscheduled. We can't have it on the agenda though.
I want to ask for... These five people said absolutely nothing about the building fees. It was the treatment they had received. It had nothing to do with anything other than how they felt, now these five people don't know each other, by the way, and they have no agenda, they were new to the area. And that's just in the last 15 months. So it's not about building fees, it wasn't about the ordinances of these five people, was about the treatment they received.
Interesting, because I got the...
And I can give you the names.
I got the letter from the latest person and it had nothing to do with the personnel, it was the permit fees. So maybe there's some disconnect going on here, but we'll certainly take the comments seriously and under advisement. So next public comment, Judy Castello.
Judy Castello, 709 A Street. First off, I'd like to say thank you to Leona, who graciously donated a 50-inch widescreen TV for the center. It is very much appreciated. The children will see their first movie on June the 20th at 1:00. I anticipate eight little people being in there with popcorn and juice everywhere. And I'm very thrilled with it, thank you. The next thing real quick is I did attend the meeting at the school, for the school. Yes, I was disappointed, I want to kind of follow what Mayor Ken said. Yes, I was a little disappointed. It's $25 for the administrative fee, which is a typical thing, that's not a big deal. But $150 for tuition was what the packet says, which comes out to, I think, like $22 or something per month per child. Not enough to get you excited to pull out or anything like that. And they did say there would be a sliding scale. We are some, we are doing something that Castle Rock School District has not done before, and that they were going to have to treat Castle Rock kindergarten the same way. So if they do a sliding scale here, they have to do one there. And it was my understanding that they don't have that there. So, anyway, that was it. And there was seven little people, signed up, three teachers and one principal, all very knowledgeable. And I think we identified five other children. They need a total of 12 in the morning and 12 in the afternoon for two classes. And they said if they only got 12, they would let the parents decide if they wanted morning or afternoon. And that then would have maybe a conflict on busing. The little mamas may have to go get their kids depending on the morning or the afternoon. But it wasn't anything that was a, a deal breaker. But anyway, just a little rundown on that. Last but not least, I'm still on the cleanup Vader campaign. Did we get any information on the county?
We haven't yet.
We haven't yet, okay. If we ever, I'm still on it. Thank you.
How I see this grow.
That's our hope and objective. All righty, well, that concludes our public comment. So let's proceed now with our official agenda. We have one item. Council is to consider ordinance 2017-04, Amendment for Overweight Vehicle Regulations. I understand there's an issue related to a portion of the content of that ordinance.
Well, number one, I didn't find anything there where the, where the weight limits were a day to show. And then two...
It's a positive.
The next thing is, is I didn't see any weight for old vehicles or dump tow trucks, towing a lot of these old junk cars out of town. We've got too many ordinances, a lot of restrictions.
Okay, we'll open it up for council conversation.
My, my problem is, is the one-time delivery, that it gives us a definition of a one-time delivery. I think when we were talking about this, we were, there wasn't a one-time, there wasn't a one-low, there was just tell us, inform the council or inform the city when it was going to happen.
Can I clarify that?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you had a chance to read all of it yet, but the one, I think what you're seeing, the definition of one-time, if I understand it correctly, is just making a designation between somebody doing repeated delivery for the same type of, of activity over and over again versus, you know, like what a, a commercial or a business would do versus somebody getting gravel delivered or, you know, for a one-time project or, or getting, and so I think that's the, where the definition came into place. If you see, if you read later on, it doesn't limit how many times you can get a one-time delivery. But it just clarifies the difference between like what a one-time delivery would mean versus...
Having a business, having them...
Yeah, having, having constant or regular deliveries. That's the way I understood it. But if, this is just, Jennifer told me that this is just her first draft at trying to put something in paper as to what she's hearing that you guys want through me. And so I, I don't, she would not be surprised at all for you guys to say, I don't like the way this says, or, you know, let's, let's change this a little bit, or, you know, whatever. So please don't be shy about doing that, this is in no way hard and fast. But this is just her first attempt to try and capture what, what she thinks you guys are, are wanting. And again, she's going, hearing it through me, so, you know, there may be some disconnect as far as communication is concerned, but yeah, by all means, if there's something that doesn't make sense to you or that you think needs to be worded differently, please, let's bring it back to her and, and get different wording, so...
Did you hear that, last person?
Yeah, did I, did I, did I read it wrong where it says any delivery that's part of an active in the city that requires a permit? So...
Yeah, I think you're correct. I think, that's the way I read it too, is that if it's part of a permit for, like for a building permit, like a, a new house or something that they're, that, and the way this is written is that they would, would need to get the overweight vehicle permit if it's part of a permitted activity.
For instance, if we, if we want to get a new roof put on and they, I don't know what roofing pays, but that's some of the trucks are almost our weight limit. So that means we do a roofing permit of $80 and then all of a sudden you have to get a $360 overweight vehicle fee.
Yeah. I think, I think you're correct. I think that is the way it's written.
It is.
However, I think you would need to try to figure out, you know, if you don't want that to be the case, then we got to figure out how we, how do you want it to read so that, so that it doesn't cover that, doesn't completely negate the ordinance itself either, so... So yeah, however you want that, that wording to change, make, by all means, make a different suggestion, but I think that's, that was one of the things that popped up when I read it as well, because I was wondering about that. I mean, it's possible you could say if it's for a new residence, for a brand new house, then those deliveries might require a overweight vehicle permit, but if it's for...
I don't, I don't even, I don't even like that because that's going to limit, I think if you're a resident, then you should have access to your house. But I do believe that like the logging companies and stuff like that, that they should have to deal with this. But when we talked about this before, I thought that it was going to be like Jason just said, I think you just said, you know, you come in, you tell the city that you're, you're getting gravel delivered or you're getting a roofing delivered or whatever, and that's for the residents.
I think we can capture that, but we can make the modifications to reflect the will of council, that's what this is all about. Could you have a...
I did, I read this three times and, you know, I'm not the brightest crayon in the box, but I quite far and art the dolest. It just seems to contradict everything. I mean, you read one section, you think, oh, okay, and then you read a little farther and I got the impression, okay, but you can't do this and you can't do that, so how can you do this? And I think I'm kind of on the same page as Mike, where it just seems to, you're not sure.
I would have to agree, I would have to agree, and I would have to also let you know that the attorney felt similar, in that she feels like a lot of the verbiage and what, what council's wanting to do is more or less negating the, the purpose of the ordinance. And so, but she's trying to accommodate it as best as she can to keep it legally sound. And so I don't know if there's maybe another way to go about this or, you know, I don't know, but she agrees that she, she's, she's kind of saying the same thing, is that it's kind of confusing and, I mean, I don't know, may, I mean, when Mike was talking, the thought came to me that maybe, maybe we need to just change this altogether and just have a specific ordinance about specific activities in the city, like if there's logging activity or if there's a business in town that receives regular deliveries that are overweight or something, you know, if we want to specifically say, these, only these handful of specific circumstances require a permit and anything else doesn't.
Be a little bit easier.
It might be easier to go that route if, you know, because if we're trying to just be selective about who's going to have to get it, so far, only, you know, my only thing I'm hearing council really saying is these logging trucks that come and do logging activity. I'm not hearing a lot of, of any other activity that seems to be brought up, council saying, no, we don't want to charge anybody for that, for any damage that it might do to the street. So I don't know, maybe that's, maybe that's an idea is to just switch it, switch kind of the focus of the ordinance. That's just a thought, and I don't know if it's making any sense as I'm trying to say, but...
For me, if I kind of look at the town, everything's off of 506 except for logging, but, and that's where we've already dealt with that and it worked out good because they repaired some of the roads that they ruined. But other than that, everything else is just residential.
I think this is going to fall into the same category as the permit charges.
It gives weight to what you were just saying.
Nobody's going to know what they need to, if they can or if they can't, and, you know, it's the same thing I feel with the permits, how do you know? Maybe one page instead of a book and...
This was not the mayor or the city clerk's ideas, this was from the city council. I know, Mike, you, you were, you've been advocating something like this. It sounds like you might want to do some modification on this.
Well, I'm looking here at review fee.
What do you, what do you mean? I, I think that...
Well, Mr. Wilson was talking.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay, we'll come back to you.
Concrete's expensive. You're building a foundation just for a house, you're going to have to have two truckloads. Here we got a review fee of $360 on top of what the concrete's going to cost you, that's the way I'm reading this thing. And so by the time you have two truckloads, you've spent almost another thousand dollars in fees to build a house. This is why I'm saying people coming in town want to build a house, that's why they go out the door. We don't want, that's what they're telling me.
Well, you don't want to overstate the situation, I mean, but this is ordinance at hand, I really would have to contest the...
Well, I'm just giving my back.
Just because somebody can articulate something doesn't mean it's fact based. Now, Mike, you were going to say something.
I think that the ordinance that we had was fine, it just needed to be kind of null and voided for the residents. I mean, I, I think that the, the spirit of the ordinance was correct, or is, is where we're messed up because, and I think we're all on the same page, even me and Amy, which is crazy. We, we're all on the same page that we want it cheaper for the residents and less restrictive for the residents. I don't, I don't know, this, when I saw this, I was just like, holy cow, like you're saying, Joe, even the attorney was like, holy cow, that there's a lot of legal reason there and it doesn't need to get this complicated. I don't think you...
Let's try to get to one page, like you're saying. And then eliminate the onerous nature of...
I say one thing, excuse me, I say one thing, I was voted in by the people, for the people, to get people to come into this city for 33 years, and that's where I am today. I want to see the city grow and not go down that tube, and that's where we're headed.
No, that's, no, Andy, that's not where we're headed, that's exactly why we're talking about this right now, is to get people into the city and make it easier for the residents.
Yeah, sometimes it is.
On page five, it says that these fees are part of an ordinance that was adopted by the Bay of Feas, so are these already current fees?
Yes.
Because we just had five loads of gravel delivered and we have 24 square feet of cement delay. And we are, are we supposed to...
But you were off the highway, so it didn't apply to you.
But if we were inside the city, if we were...
Technically, yes.
That's why, that's why I brought this up, so that it can be changed for the residents. That's what we want to, to continue to do that type of stuff.
Yeah, somehow, Mike, I think the vehicle that we're creating isn't accomplishing that, but I think that we have enough to work with that we can...
I'm a little confused about where you guys want this to go, only because I can't imagine... imagine that the attorney feeling like she could write something on one or two pages that's going to cover all of these. I mean, she's, she's put this together based on what she's hearing from council, and, I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I will ask her, but, but, you know, we have to realize we're asking an attorney whose responsibility is, is to make sure that we are legally defensible, and that's why we have 42 pages, is because of all the, "Yes, we'll allow this, no, we won't allow that," and making all those clarifications, that's part of why it's the way it is. I don't, I'm not sure that she's going to be able to get it down to one or two pages, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I think the only way to get it down to there is to be a lot more specific about who this applies to. Who does it actually apply to, and everybody else it doesn't, just kind of blanket stating it that way, and I don't know if there's a possible way to do that, I can ask her.
I was just, when I first brought this up, I thought that it would be adding an exception
onto the, the current ordinance that says, "Except for residents," basically.
Okay, well, that's what she was trying to do here. I mean, it had to be addressed in a couple of different, a couple of different spots, but that's what she was trying to do. But you have to remember that people who own timber are considered residents as well, and so you have to clarify, you know, you have to be able to clarify everything.
We had a comment from...
Yeah, I just got one simple question. I'm wondering, down my alley, I was going to donate some gravel down through it, do I need a permit for that? I was picking back a dump truck or two down through it.
Well, if you pass this, then all you have to do, if you don't pass it, then technically, yes, you would, you're supposed to have a permit, however, we haven't been enforcing it. Because this discussion has been on the table, and council's will has been to not, not charge you for that, so, at this point, no one's going to chase you down, and you have it on record that council's will is to allow you to do that, although it's not legally in the paperwork yet.
My, Roy Wilson, the chief of the Calistini Club, sent me up here. I'm supposed to listen.
Okay, well, in the interest of discussion, maybe we can take some individual feedback from the council members in the next week or so, including you, Mr. Parsons, and we'll try to massage this, so that it's palatable and not so onerous, and add to the perception of permit or excessive permitting in the city of Vator. Okay, so it'll be on our next agenda, you'll go rendition number five, six?
Whatever number, yeah, we'll keep working on it.
Any other council comments? All righty, well then, thank you all for a productive meeting, we've completed our agenda. The floor of this council meeting is concluded at 7:12 PM.